Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 1st, 2019. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we commence business before the City Council, we are ever mindful of the many blessings and great opportunities in outstanding residents that we have who live within our community and who serve us on a variety of fronts, be it government, or school, or community in general. That's what makes Batavia a very special place for all of us to live and to work and to raise families, and we're ever so thankful for that great blessing on our community. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all those serving with them as they go about their vital mission in defending the liberties of our and in our honor. As always tonight, we ask for guidance and vision and understanding as we act on the various items of business before us, knowing that each member of the City Council is here to do what in their best minds and hearts is in the best interests of the community. We ask for all these questions. Amen.
Alderman Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The fight of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Atech?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer? Saron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
At the record, we've got 13 of the 14 elected members of the City Council who are present and accounted for this evening's meetings. We obviously have the necessary qualm to conduct business. Alderman Her is absent tonight. He informed me he's going to be out of state for the next day or two, so he's not been able to be able to attend. I would like to remind everyone that we would ask that everybody, if you're going to speak, whether it's the members of the Council or the public, that they try to get to a microphone and use it, as you know, where our meetings are televised on KTV, and they're doing so tonight, and you don't use the mic, sometimes it's very difficult for people in the viewing audience to hear. So again, we just remind everybody at the beginning of the meeting to do that. Moving then to item number five, which is items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Atech is Chairman of Governmental Services. Do you have anything this evening?
I do not have anything this evening.
Anybody else? Okay, moving to item six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Again, Alderman Atech is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file committee of the whole minutes for February 26, 2019, March 12, 2019, and March 5, 2019. Approvals: March 22, 2019, payroll in the amount of $919,283.67; and March 26, payroll in the amount of $11,092.61. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $794,928.74. 2018 budget transfer list and budget reconciliation. Resolution 19-035-R: Authorization to purchase truck equipment in the amount of $212,619 from Monroe Truck Equipment. Ordinance 19-26: Declaring surplus property electric utility. Ordinance 19-25: Approval of the fire cord v. variants for 1335 South River Street above-ground fuel tank. Resolution 19-022-R: Authorizing execution of task order #15 with engineering enterprises, professional engineering services relating to completing a full waterwork system calibrated hydraulic model for an amount not to exceed $49,820. Resolution 19-038-R: Authorizing execution of a contract for the rehabilitation of well #7 with Lane Christiansen of Aurora, Illinois for the amount not to exceed $62,355.70. I move that we approve the consent agendas presented. Second?
Moved by Alderman Atech, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? We'll call the roll.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, right on time, at 7:35, we have a public hearing scheduled for the establishment of SSA #65 for the Barki Farms subdivision Phase 1, 2, and 3. So I will convene it, and Scott, do you have anything?
Yes, this is the establishment of the backup SSA for the Barki Farms subdivision. This would be a backup SSA, so there would be no actual levy unless the city needs to because of lack of maintenance of the detention area or the signage. This is negotiated with the homeowners' association on behalf of the homeowners, and they agreed to proceed with this special service area. They would be erecting a subdivision sign subsequent to this approval as well.
Any questions in the council? Do we have anybody in the audience this evening that wishes to address us on the subject of the creation of SSA for the Barki subdivision? Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion then to adjourn the public hearing.
I move to adjourn the public hearing.
Second?
Motion by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. I know we have some students in the audience. I just want to point out to them that we just held a public hearing in one minute. Get down the agenda to some more pertinent matters of business. So I appreciate the promptness and the cooperation that we received from the folks from the Barki subdivision on that particular idea. Obviously, nobody had any issue with it. Okay, moving then to item number eight, matters from the public for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anybody on that one? All right, moving right along to number nine. Now, we are having tonight's the Batavia Chamber of Commerce report, and we're very honored to have the Executive Director and President, Holly Deitchman, here to present it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to change things up a little bit this evening. I usually come up and talk about a lot of events that we have coming up. We still have a lot of events coming up, but I would like for you to just visit our website or upcoming calendar. This month, I'm going to share with you an awesome project that we are working on behind the scenes at the chamber, and that's a partnership between the Batavia Chamber and the school district. When meeting with many of our industrial partners in Batavia, we were hearing the same thing over and over again about their need to hire and find qualified candidates. And if you drive down any of our small or large industrial areas, you'll see lots of those flags out that say "Now Hiring." And so I started approaching the school district to say, hey, where are the kids going that aren't college-bound? Are they finding jobs? Are they getting technical skills? Are they picking up different types of skills that they could use in the future, potentially in a job right here in Batavia? So along with the Chief Academic Advisor at the school district, Mr. Brad Newkirk, we devised a program that we are now kind of in our pilot program right now of determining and getting some ideas at the middle school level of kids being exposed to different careers and paths that they might be able to seek in the future. So we have some businesses that are coming into the classrooms and doing presentations. This is among a very wide and long-term project that we are expecting to see some impact, maybe even in the next generation. But what this does is hopefully shows children that there are great jobs available in Batavia from automotive through packaging and warehouses that will give them good, solid jobs, have them ready when they graduate high school without incurring a large amount of tuition debt and then coming and living in their parents' basements. So we're working on this. We're trying really hard to gain some great partners in our industrial complexes, and throughout Batavia, we've taken a tour of many different manufacturing facilities, and one that we were the most proud of and thought would be a great way to introduce students into our industrial park was through Batavia Container. Batavia Container is a corrugated box manufacturing design, custom-built box company, and I can tell you that inside there, they have a windmill that is completely made out of cardboard. They have the, all kinds of signage and end caps and things that you see in the grocery store aisles that they are making right here in Batavia. It is a clean, beautiful, unbelievable manufacturing facility that we have here, and they need people. So I have with me here to just explain a little bit more about what they do and why they want to align with us on this project. This is Amy Conies. She is the HR Specialist for Batavia Container. Amy?
Thank you. Thank you, Holly, and I want to thank Holly for inviting me. I'm very honored to be here, and we're very happy to be partnering with Holly in the chamber and the school district as well for this project. As Holly said, we are a corrugated packaging facility. Our windmill actually moves as well, but we are, you know, we do everything that you can think of with corrugated. We do packaging. We do plain old brown boxes. We do displays, end caps. There really is no limit to what we can do, and when this project came about, it just made so much sense for us to get involved. Like Holly said, there are things that the children can do if they don't, if they aren't interested in college, and we speak to that directly. We have a lot of leaders at our organization who did not go the college route, and so we want them to see there are more things you can do. And our design manager, Mark Benson, who is leading this project with me and Holly, has so many ideas for what these kids can do and how to help them and show them that, you know, technical skills are real and they shouldn't be going away. And it's definitely something that gets us very excited, gets me very excited on the HR side. I've been in HR my whole career, and I just love working with people and seeing them get excited. It gets me excited, so we just, you know, are very happy to be doing this. And if you are interested in who we are, give me a call. You have my business card. I'm happy to give you a tour. You can see the windmill. You can see, we actually have chairs that you can sit in. I am told they support the weight of shack, so I'll go with it. They're pretty sturdy. But we are looking forward to this and, you know, as we start this path with Holly and seeing what else we can do in the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Number One, for coming, and certainly Batavia Container has been a viable part of Batavia's industrial area there for many, many years, and has always been a highly regarded and praised business and one that we're proud to have as part of our community.
Thank you.
So thank you for your continuation of really what's a very proud record of industrial production out there in industrial parks. So we appreciate all you do and all the jobs that are created and the good corporate citizen that Batavia Container has entrenchly become for all the years that you've been here.
Thank you.
So thank you for carrying forth, and thanks for coming down tonight.
Sure.
And just in closing, if anybody has any questions, you know how to reach me. If you want to be a part of a committee that we're putting together to further this project, I would love to hear from you. We're really excited about it, and I think that we're going to be, the Batavia Chamber is going to be making an impact on the community in a different way moving forward, so.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item number 10, which is a presentation tonight on the Batavia High School Wrestling Program, and I'll ask our City Clerk if she would be due the honors of introducing the coach.
Yes, our head coach, Scott Baer, is here. Scott, if you could come up, he's going to introduce his coaching staff and share a few words about the program.
First thing I'm going to do is adjust the microphone. So first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity tonight to acknowledge our wrestlers. We had a really good season this season. I'd like to first acknowledge my coaching staff, some of whom are in attendance today. So I have Coach Ryan Farwell back there. Ryan, if you could stand. We also have Coach Alvarado, and Coach Miller. Not here tonight are Coach Tom Arlis and his son, Logan Arlis. So yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to acknowledge our wrestlers here. You know, first, I guess, thank you too for your service to this community, and community is a preach point, I guess, for us in our program. I continually remind our guys and girls that it's a pretty special place to live. It's a special place to grow up. It's a special place to go to school, and there's a real palpable sense of community here, and I think it's, you know, evenings like this that kind of demonstrate that. So thanks very much for that. This season, we had a, you know, a number of accolades, you know, which I know that we've got some acknowledgements to give out here, but our varsity team did pretty well, placed top three most tournaments we wrestled in, and we had a number of athletes achieve pretty high levels of success by the end of the season. In addition to that, I'd like to say too, we also started a girls' wrestling team this year. One of the better decisions I've made is a head coach, and, you know, we had 11 girls start the season, 11 girls end the season, so, and more to come on that front in the years to come. So very pleased with that, very pleased with, you know, the competitive successes our guys and girls had, so thanks for acknowledging them.
Thank you. If you just could wait here a minute, I've got Alderman Wolf, who is the voice of the Bulldogs, is going to come up and join me on the podium with you.
So I get to be the one to pronounce the names?
So before we present the certificates, I just want to do a moment of history here because I think there is a significant moment here. I thought when the City Clerk mentioned to me he'd like to do this, that maybe this was going to be true, so over the weekend, I had the opportunity to dig into my vast files and records through the Batavia Library of Batavia High School, and I don't know if you're aware, but this is the 60th anniversary of the Batavia High School Wrestling Program this year. And it was, I went back and looked, and I thought who was the first coach was, and it was Floyd Carlson, his name was, and he truly was a very monumental force at Batavia High School. He was a shop teacher and later started the printing program at Batavia High School, and he was, you know, probably one of the most favorite teachers in the school for many, many years. I'll tell you the story that I looked at the first wrestling team that Batavia High School put on the mats, and what was interesting to me was, one of them was our future building inspector, and the other one was one of the foremen of our city electric utility. And so it wasn't surprising when I put all this together that, we have this tradition in Batavia that any new streets that are, come into the community, the Historical Society has put together a list of names that have had a significant impact on Batavia history, and one of the names on the list was Carlson. And so when the day came to put up the Carlson Court sign in the subdivision where it is, I went out there, and here stood a lot of our public workspeople from the street department, the electrical, the water department, and they all wanted to be there because the coach had by then passed away, but they all wanted to be there to, while his sign went up, and then they all stood there, and I think a couple of them shed a tear, and everybody applauded. And so that just shows you how beloved this program has become. And so I think you're following forth with a great mode of tradition here and one that certainly Batavia High School can be very proud of, and certainly the achievements that this team and some of the more recent teams has attained really has shined this program up into a very, very positive force within the school and the community. And all I can think of, wherever he is, Coach Carlson has shined, got big smiles on his face as he looks down upon this program that he kind of birthed and put out there, and it has come so great and so grand that I think everybody in the whole thing through the last 60 years can stand here tonight and be very proud of these men and women for what they're doing to carry on this legacy of tradition that was started 60 years ago in Batavia. Mr. Alderman Wolf?
I'll start right off with fourth place IHSA State. The certificate is awarded to Mikey Caliendo. This is an IHSA State qualifier, Justin Major. Champion in Illinois State, Girls State Wrestling, Taylan Long. Illinois Girls State Qualifier, Julie Pellic. Illinois Girls State Qualifier, Brenda Madrigal Blanco. Illinois Girls State Qualifier, Alexa Garcia. And Illinois Girls State Qualifier, Karina Morphin.
We had one more state qualifier, that's Erna Haskovit. Thank you. Little fun fact, the first team points ever scored in a Batavia High School wrestling
Okay, moving to item number 11, which is ordinance 19-02, establishing special service area 65 for the Barki Farms PUD subdivision Phases 1, 2, and 3. Alderman Brown, do you have this one?
I do, Your Honor. Thank you. This goes right along with the public hearing that was just held at 7:35. This is something that the residents came and worked with staff on, that they were looking to establish something in this effect, and then they also discussed the fact that they wanted to put a monument sign, an entrance sign into their subdivision, so this will cover that as well. So staff had went through all the requirements that were necessary to do this. We held a public hearing, and all the days were allowed that were necessary for anyone to object. No one did, so I move for approval of ordinance 19-02.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of ordinance 19-02. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-02 is approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to item number 12, which is ordinance 19-22, annexing 320 Allen Lane. Alderman Brown, do you have this?
I do, Your Honor. I'll take the next three ordinances. Again, this is something that staff's been working on with the cooperation of the Committee of the Whole and the City Council, and we're trying to get all these little islands annexed throughout town and bring them into the city of Batavia as a corporate citizen. And everybody's been pretty receptive to this that we've contacted to date. This one was not on the city utilities as of yet. When we get down to the property at 2 South 396 South Redant, that is on the city utilities and is required under their utility agreement to annex. But there is no objection by any of these properties to annex into the city of Batavia, so I move that we approve ordinance 19-22, annexing 320 Allen Lane.
Second?
Your Honor?
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark, and this is for ordinances 19, 22, 23, and 24. Is that what you're doing?
I'm sorry?
320 individually.
I'm just doing one at a time, yeah. 320 Allen Lane, the first one.
That's the next one.
That'll be the next one.
So we have a motion second for the approval of ordinance 19-22, 320 Allen Lane. Kirk, call the roll.
It was the gentleman there that I knew he wanted to come up and speak if we were running these three together, but if we're running the first one individually, then by all means.
Okay. Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-22 is approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving then to item 13, which is ordinance 19-22, annexing 3 South 102 Wagner Road. Alderman Brown?
Just as the last one we just approved, but this one is, apparently there is someone here that would like to speak on this. I will note that this one, this property is serviced by the city sewer and water, and under their utility agreement, it was required that they annex to the city. So, Your Honor, before I make a motion, I would suggest we let this...
Correct, this one, this one is not on city utilities.
This one is not?
No, I'm not on any city utilities. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for, my name's Matt Johnston. I'm the owner of the property. I acquired the place two years ago.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not on any city utilities.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my mistake.
And, you know, when I purchased the place, there was, I believe, it was, it was rough. There was, I believe, seven or eight undocumented families living in this property, and over the last couple of years, I removed all the outbuildings. I've made amends with all of my neighbors. There's no more trash is being burned, and the police aren't at the property every couple of weeks, you know, dealing with domestics and other issues. You know, I purchased this property to fix it up, and that's what I've been doing, and I've been making improvements on the property. And, you know, I know there's like 200 properties that are in the state, pardon me, in the township that you guys need to annex. I'm just asking for a couple of years more grace so I can continue to make improvements on my land. It's, I'm right on the edge of Kirk Road. I understand this needs to be done. You know, it's also really disappointing in that my septic tank just went down, and I just spent $3,700 getting a new tank just two months ago. And if that would have happened next week, you guys would have had to pay for that. I mean, I'm, I'm being a good citizen. I'm making improvements on my property, and I would appreciate it if I continue to have some grace, so I can continue to do that. It's, I mean, considering the condition the property was in before I got it and it is now, I mean, it's a, I mean, it's a, I don't know, it's, it's, I don't really have too much else to say other than that. I'm not opposed to it. I would just like to have some, a couple of years. There's lots of other properties that still need to continue to be annexed, and I'm not saying I don't want it done. I'd just like to have a little bit of the liberties that it gives me, not running it through being unincorporated. So it definitely makes the improvements a lot easier for me to take care of. And I think it's, per capita revenue is $145 per year. That's what the, the city will be receiving. I mean, the improvements that I'm making on it for my neighbor's property as well far exceeds that. So I would really appreciate and be grateful if I could get a couple of years on this. Thanks.
Alderman Brown?
Yeah, a couple of questions for you. I guess first to Scott, have you had any communication with the gentleman?
Yes, I've had, I've spoken with him on the phone before, yes.
I'm just curious as to why, I mean, I appreciate the fact that you want to improve your property, but why is it that you think it's easier to improve your property if you're not in the city?
There's, there's, being unincorporated gives me the ability to do things on the property that I can't do if I am in the actual township, as far as like vehicles and for me to get permitting and things like, it's just a little bit easier with the, if, I mean, I have a lot of timber in my land that, it was terribly overgrown, and I've done, over the last two years, I've done three burns, getting rid of just all this just scrap wood. years, I've done three burns, getting rid of just all this just scrap wood. I call up the city of Potavia, I talk to the firemen, I let them know that I'm going to be doing a burn. These are things that I can do with it being unincorporated that I don't have access to if I'm, if I'm in the township. Just something simple like that.
Scott, back to his comment on repairing the septic. I thought that if a septic failed and you were within a certain distance to an incorporated city, you weren't allowed to repair your septic.
That's true. If it depends on how the health department deals with the situation. If the sewer is available, which it is in this case, they're supposed to connect onto the city sewer. I don't know why the county, you know, it depends on the amount of repairs, I suppose, but in this case, the county probably should have told them you had to connect onto the city sewer.
I just went down and filled out a permit saying that my septic caved in and that I needed to get a new one, and they approved me. I mean, that's $3,700 that went out of my pocket right before Christmas.
But to be clear also on your comment that if we had annexed you before you did this, the city would have had to pay for that? That's not --
Actually, no, you wouldn't have, you would have had to, the city would have had to trench all the way to my, it would have been, I don't even know how much that cost, 20, 30, $35,000 to trench and get sewer and --
Well, without having engineering or Scott looking at that, we really shouldn't probably --
It would have been more than $10,000.
We don't run sewers up to houses, the homeowner does that. We would maybe have to look at some participation to get the main to a point where you could hook up to it, but that's something that we probably shouldn't address without --
Then that would have bankrupt me, because there's no way I could have afforded that. I mean, to run sewer 200 or 300 feet, I mean, that would have, honestly, I'm not exaggerating, that would have --
I don't recall exactly, but I believe the sewer is --
That would have been a financial burden that I could not have been able to cover.
But you did get a permit from the county to do that?
Definitely, yes.
What's the size of your property as far as acreage?
Just a hair under 2 acres.
And you're right there on the curve there on Wagner Road someplace?
Wagner Road and Win Energy. I'm about, I don't know, 50, 75 yards south of there. Essentially, the previous owner, there was a HOA that came in, and I think they built like 185 homes, but this owner didn't sell. And so, I mean, that's one of the appeals for me, for, when I originally was interested in purchasing this property, I, I'm a salesman, I sell clothing for a living, I work for a company called Columbia Sportswear. I have trailers, I have vehicles, I have lots of equipment that I need to store on my vehicle. These are, I would be running into issues with the city if I had to, if I'm annexed.
Which, which is one of the reasons why we like to incorporate these little islands that are out there, because you are surrounded by citizens of Potavia.
Right.
So should they not be protected by some of the things that the city of Potavia can protect them from?
Please trust me, they're in a much, much better place with me being there than the previous occupants. They're, they're --
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just --
No, I'm just saying, the financial hardship that I would have not being able to store my vehicles and my trailers, you know, there's, it's, I just get a little bit of liberties that I get by being unincorporated that I don't get by being in the city.
So if we give you two years, that's just if we give you two years, what will you do with your trucks and trailers then, in two years?
It'll give me the opportunity to change my business, because right now, it's, I mean, I, I, I'm planning on moving out west of town, I mean, this is, I started this business and it's, like I said, I don't have a problem with you guys annexing, I'm just asking for two or three years grace, I really am. It would just give me the opportunity to get my affairs in order, and rather than two or three months that I did receive.
So you're moving in a couple of years then?
I, I'm going to improve this property. If I can't have my vehicles there, then obviously I'm going to have to find another situation.
And you would market the property saying that upon the sale, it would be annexed then?
Definitely, definitely. If I had known that it was going to be annexed, I might have not even considered purchasing the property. I didn't know that when I, when I bought it.
I have a question for Scott. Even if this is in the township now, there would still be restrictions on how many cars, trucks, trailers can be parked out there, because I know all along Main Street, right across from where I live, there are restrictions of where the trucks are, you know, can be parked on the property. Right. Yeah, you can't, I mean, even if it's in the county, you can't park them on grass and on unimproved surfaces. And as long as his business, just to clarify on some of his concerns, even if the, as long as his business and what he's doing is legal in the county, we grandfather that by annexation. So if he has trucks and trailers and things like that today, you know, it would be a snapshot in time, as long as he's not expanding the business, then he's allowed to continue doing that. And that was one thing I wanted to know, was if it stays in the condition it is today as far as amount, vehicles and everything, then would just stay that until he leaves the property? Correct.
As again, I know there's lots and lots of properties that need to be annexed in Potavia, and I'm just asking for three years grace, that's all. I'm more than willing to turn it over after that, I just need some time to get my affairs in orders and make the improvements on the house, because it was rough when I bought it, it really was. I mean, there's been new roof, new windows, I mean, and I can't stress enough how good the relationship was with the neighbors compared to what it was before when the previous occupants were burning trash and the police were there all the time.
We've talked about this before, and I don't recall it, what are the costs of hooking up to sewer and water? And do we give, I mean, we talked about giving for some people some sort of grace period on that too, but what would his cost be if we didn't do that?
Yeah, in general, as long as you don't have to have any water or sewer line extensions, main extensions, it's, you know, somewhere, it depends on, you know, the number of fixtures and size service that you have to have, but it ranges for both water and sewer from around $7,000 to $11,000 to connect both.
And we don't know if he has extension requirements?
I don't believe he does. I think their water and sewer are in Wagner right there because of all the development we already have in that area. Because we already have the townhouses are right across the street from him.
But from his house, does he have, would he have extension, would he have to --
He'd have to extend his private sewer line.
So he'd have additional costs with that?
Yes.
And we don't, so it's --
I couldn't estimate what that is, he'd have to --
The sewer's 290 feet from my house where the, since the townhouses came in, so it would have to be run that far. That's pretty, I mean, that's a pretty penny, that's a lot of money.
It's shorter than that, that's the length of the property.
Okay.
So it's shorter than that.
Sorry. Okay, yeah. It's more than 200 feet.
I was going to recommend, can we just move this back to committee and see if there's an opportunity for staff to talk about it, because I don't see a tremendous downside, given the grandfathering that would be done and the fact that we have precedent for long-term payment plans and whatnot. I just think that staff should try and work something out and bring this back to us. So I would, I move to table it.
I would support that.
Me too.
Absolutely.
Second to table.
Did we already have a motion? No, I didn't make the motion. Your Honor, before you do a vote on that, I think I would support Alderman Chantek's idea on this. I think one of the beautiful things that we're witnessing here tonight is, you know, we've been working with staff to do some of these annexations. Some are very voluntary, some are forced, and the force comes without resistance. But yet we have someone here tonight that has great concerns over what we're doing and his expense and what he's planning on doing with his property. So I think to take a little bit of time off on this one and see what else we can do to work with the citizen is obviously the right way to go. And I say that broadly when I say citizen, because you're not a citizen, but yet we're willing to listen to your concerns.
The disappointing thing is that I can't actually use the public library, so I go in there and I make a donation whenever I use it, so, but, yeah, I'm grateful for your reconsideration or opportunity to that.
Well, the city attorney advises me, I'm kind of stepping on Robert's rules here, because once the table motion's been made, you're supposed to vote without further discussion.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Kirk Caldwell, roll for the table of this.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Motion to table is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a great evening, appreciate it.
Okay, moving to 14, which is Ordinance 19-24, annexing 2 South 396 and 2 South 420 South Redant Road. Alderman Brown?
So this is the one that is currently serviced by utilities and is under their agreement supposed to be getting annexed into the city of Potavia. As far as I know, there's no one here to speak for this tonight, so I move for approval of Ordinance 19-24, annexing 2 South 396 and 2 South 420 South Redant Road.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval. Anybody on the council? Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this?
Not this property, I wanted to speak to another property.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and second on the floor then for the approval of Ordinance 19-24, annexing 2 South 396 and 2 South 420 South Redant Road. No further discussion, the court calls a roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Motion to table is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a great evening, appreciate it.
Okay, moving to 14, which is Ordinance 19-24, annexing 2 South 396 and 2 South 420 South Redant Road. Alderman Brown?
So this is the one that is currently serviced by utilities and is under their agreement supposed to be getting annexed into the city of Potavia. As far as I know, there's no one here to speak for this tonight, so I move for approval of Ordinance 19-24, annexing 2 South 396 and 2 South 420 South Redant Road.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval. Anybody on the council? Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this?
Not this property, I wanted to speak to another property.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and second on the floor then for the approval of Ordinance 19-24, annexing 2 South 396 and 2 South 420 South Redant Road. No further discussion, the court calls a roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Ordinance 19-24 is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. Do you want to make some comment about annexation or something?
Yes, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor Shelkey, and council members. I, we currently reside at 320 Ellen Lane. My name is Michael Vaughn, I'm with my wife and son here. I speak on behalf of Janet Royce, who owns the property, her mother. And I just, I didn't get a chance to speak on behalf of the annexation of 320 Ellen Lane. If I can just have a second? Sorry, you guys already voted, so.
Right.
I guess my biggest concern is the cost. I've gotten a bid for, to run the sewer and water lines, I've gotten a couple of them, they run upwards of $20,000. That they could be overpricing or not, and about capping the well. And my biggest, when, what's the timeframe that we have to hook up? Because coming up with, you know, $10,000, $20,000 is, you know, kind of a big deal.
Scott?
Yeah, the policy that we, that this has been set forth by the council has been that we are not requiring the connections unless the septic's fail or there's a substantial improvement to the property, if you put an addition on or something like that. As long as your well and septic's are operating fine, you can continue to use those, you do not need to connect onto the city sewer at this time.
Okay, do you know when? Just until it fails?
Until it fails, that's the policy that's moving us, yes.
Okay. Let's open up an escrow account and start saving for it.
Your Honor, can I follow up on that? I just want to maybe ask Scott, or if it's okay if we ask Scott, that, because the way I understand it is, if they're having a utility fail, the county's not supposed to allow them to fix it. Now, maybe it might be, depending on what really needs to be done, but maybe there should be some further conversation with the county about making sure that when these things happen?
We have, and we had a meeting with them about a year ago, I want to say, about this exact issue. Because we had another property or two that did connect, and they did not contact us about this, or they went ahead and allowed it anyway. So, you know, I'll find out some more information, but we may need to have another conversation with the county about that. Scott? Do we also have, like, information for homeowners, if it becomes an emergency and they have to do that? Isn't there a way that they can also apply the cost of that or some of the bill from the city to their taxes that can be spread out over time? Are there other options for the owner? We had, we had some option years ago, but that was when we did a neighborhood extension, I believe, and I don't think we've had any policies on that recently, so. Okay. Financing or anything like that. Because I know we've done it before individually on a couple of them, and I was just wondering if that's anything that we have available, if there's any way that in an emergency situation like that where somebody is not expecting to spend 10 grand this year, how they could do that?
In the past, we have done it through an SSA, we did on Ellen, portions of Ellen and Roberts Lane, and then we also did some private loans on Wobonsi and Maple and Shabna. But generally, it's when there's a large group of people.
They come forward like an SSA area, okay. Because I just want, I want, if there are options for people and, you know, they don't know how they're going to be able to help with that or how they're going to be able to do that, if there's some way that we can have that information available for them when they come in?
I'm sure that if they had some issue where they could not get a bank loan, that we could work something out.
Thank you. And just to follow up with that, you know, some of these, some of the annexations we've been doing now, that are ones and twos properties, and as we continue on, we're going to get into some larger neighborhood areas. So those are going to be areas that, you know, we're going to probably have some infrastructure discussions about at some point where we would do something like an SSA to fund that type of thing.
Any questions? All right, I guess we go to the administrator's report.
Good evening. Just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow is Election Day, and because it is Election Day, we are not going to have a Committee of the Whole meeting tomorrow evening. Wanted to let you know about, an update about the pop-up chalets that were discussed at a previous Committee of the Whole meeting. The city has been meeting both internally and also with Main Street to discuss more about how that program might look here in our community. We met with them this past Friday, and we have decided that it would be a good idea for us to actually visit Muskegon, Michigan, because it is so close, it's just a day trip away, to see firsthand how they are running their program there. So we've reached out to officials in Muskegon, and they welcomed the opportunity to meet with us and show us how their program runs, and we can, you know, Jeff Albertson is also going to accompany us on that trip so that he can see specifically how the buildings are built, and we will be meeting with the people who select who those businesses are to talk about how it is that they decide which businesses they're going to locate there. Also, this Friday, we're meeting with various contingent groups around town to talk about our walking, biking, and wayfinding. We really would like to move that program forward so that we can identify safe routes through our downtown, so that no matter what mode of transportation you're choosing, whether it be by car, by bicycle, or walking, you can safely get where you're going. And then, once we've established those safe paths through the community, we want to be driving people toward the cool and great things to do in our downtown, dining, entertainment, stores that they can visit. And so we hope to be able to quickly do our work and bring those things online so that we can increase the support of our downtown businesses, but also make sure that everybody enjoys themselves and they're safe while they do it. We're interviewing eight different candidates for the communication coordinator position. We've received a great many applications of very qualified people. And also, we are developing the required documents toward creating the proposed Gateway site for those companies. That's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions about a particular project for me.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, we have other business?
Your Honor, I had a question this week from a resident of a bicyclist. The bike path on the west side of the waste treatment facility, is that open yet, or was it, and then it's closed again?
It's going to be open, I believe.
Do we have a timer?
You're just finalizing the signage for that, so I don't know if they've officially cut the ribbon out there or not, but it's, it's coming.
Okay. Because I know that the fence was up there, and then it was down, and then it's back up.
And everyone kind of, pardon our dust out there, because, I mean, the construction site, as you all know, is still inactive.
Right, and that's what I explained to them, was it was still...
I won't be surprised to say that it's open one day and maybe has to be closed one day in order for work to be completed, so.
Okay.
Right now, it's certainly not fully finished out there.
Okay, thank you.
I have something a little bit different for the mayor's report tonight.
Your Honor, we, did you want to do a committee report first?
What?
Did you want to do the committee report?
Oh, sorry, committee report. Alderman Brown?
Trying to help you out.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do want to read this, what's going to happen on the Plan Commission this coming Wednesday, because there are some residents in that area that may be concerned, so I want to make sure I say what needs to be said. So, the Plan Commission is going to hold a public hearing for the amendment to a planned development water tower crossing single-family residential subdivision located at 1600 West Wilson Street. It's, the petitioner is Habitat for Humanity for Northern Fox Valley. That's the applicant, rather than a petitioner. And they're also going to be entertaining the amendment to an existing R1H single-family residential high-density zoning district, planned development overlay district, and then the preliminary and final plat of subdivision, and then the rescinding of the design review. And that all sounds very complicated, and it does sound complicated. But what that essentially is, and I don't think that there's going to be any residents that would probably have any concern over this, that they won't be satisfied with when they see the outcome, but Alderman, McFadden, and I probably heard from quite a few of the residents with some of the different proposals that were presented over the years out there. But what is now being presented, or being asked for, is a change from what was approved of six single-family lots on that property where the old water tower was across from the Ace Hardware, to four. So, they're going to be seeing larger lots and maybe some nicer homes than what was maybe already going to be approved and, and be built out there. So, I think if there are some residents in the area there that, that are concerned when they see what the proposal is, they're going to be happier now than they were, and they were satisfied with what they saw when it was being zoned and being built as six single-family lots. So, that is this coming Wednesday at 7:00. And then also on the Plan Commission agenda is the approval of the final plat of Prairie Commons First Res subdivision. That's at the Prairie Commons subdivision. Mackey Consultants is the applicant. And then, Monday, April 8th, at 5:30 PM, Historic Preservation is scheduled, and then the next Committee of the Whole is scheduled for next Tuesday at 7:00 PM. That's all I have.
Any questions for the community development? Government Services, Alderman Atech?
No report this evening.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
A couple of things, Your Honor. Just to announce again, it's already on our website, but the Kirk Road multi-use path is going to be reconstructed, and that'll start this week out along Kirk Road from Pine Street to approximately 750 feet north of Mesa Lane. So, that's one I wanted to get out that everybody knows about. Also, that brush collection will resume in May, so don't start piling brush up out on the curb now. Keep it behind fence, whatever, until May. And then, our yard waste collection has resumed, and it is now not free, so you have to use stickers or marked cans for that going forward. And that's it. Thank you.
Questions of the City Services?
Your Honor, I have a comment for Allen. I just can't stop. You brought up Kirk Road.
Mm-hmm.
And I might suggest that people be forewarned that Kirk Road is going to be a mess this year. Between that bicycle path reconstruction, and then the wind energy, and Kirk Road is going to get widened out there, and there's going to be a turn lane and signalization improvements there. And then further north, when you get up to Fabian Parkway and Kirk Road, that's a two-year project that's going to be going on there. So, Kirk Road is going to be a challenge this year.
Thank you.
Thank you for your heads up. Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
No report, Your Honor.
Okay. Is anybody on the council, anything else they wish to bring up?
I just want to bring up one thing to add on to your, your history about Floyd Carlson. I found it interesting tonight, as we had the chamber brought up a program about involving kids in careers that they could have, technical careers, vocational careers. The Batavia Education Association has scholarships in honor of Floyd "Sweed" Carlson. One is given to a student that's going on into education, and the other one is given to a student that's going into the technical vocational career. So, I thought it was kind of ironic. We heard that report earlier, and, you know, "Sweed" Carlson was quite a legend. Never had the honor to meet him, but I knew a lot of staff members that did, and had great stories about him. Just wanted to add that, that bit to it.
Well, I have a favorite story about him. I will tell. He was a teacher when I went to Batavia High School. I never had him for a class, but I had him in study hall, and I was kind of one of his people he liked, I guess. So, when he got ready to retire, it was 1981, and it was right, my first time I was running for mayor. So, they were having a party for him down at the Musage, and I'd, you know, been with him for years, so I bought a ticket. So, I walk in there, and he's kind of opened his eyes, and so he gets up in front of the crowd, and he says, "Well," he says, "I thought this was a retirement party for me, but Jeff Schalki just walked in here, and he says, 'He's running for mayor, so I think we're turning this into a political event.'" So, then he says, "No," he says, "I shouldn't say that." He says, knowing Jeff, he says, "He's probably going to end up being mayor longer than I've taught at Batavia High School." He was right again. Oh, that's my favorite story of Floyd, because he was quite the character. And I could say "Sweed," that the kids called him "Sweed," because that was his nickname, but memorable teacher. Okay, I've got a thing. It's necessarily going to take long, but I've got some very interesting things I'd like to show you. This is, I'll call this "The Mayor's Weekend", and I had two different events that happened to me over the weekend that I want to share with you. And I got just a few slides. Scott, could you turn the lights down? I think this will show better. What I'm about to show you is this thing, I'll call it "Batavia Then and Now," and I'm going to use some of these in a program I'm going to give at the library up on the 22nd as part of the Historical Society. And what this is, is on Saturday, one of the first things that happened to me is I get a call from John Clark out at Avenue Motors, and he says, "Can you come out?" So, I went out, and he had the fire department out there doing a practice. They were filling the building full of smoke and letting all the young recruits go in and crawl through the smoke, which was, they were doing in the eastern half of the building. So, it was very nice that John let them do that, because it was great training for them. So, strike another one up for him. But then he says, "I just can't believe what I just found in a chest here." So, he whips out these photographs that his grandfather had contracted a professional photographer to take on November 10th, 1965, of the old Avenue Motors building, when it was up here on Batavia Avenue. And they were just starting to talk about doing some expansion. They were going to go across the street, which they did, and buy a house and open up a used car lot there. And they were even then talking about maybe eventually moving. So, they wanted to have some pictures of his business. And so, John shows me these pictures, and I said, "Can you let me borrow these? I think these would be a great public lesson." So, he says, "Absolutely." So, he let me borrow them. I took them on weekend and had them scanned over Walgreens. And I'm going to show you a then-and-now of the area right here around the City Hall in November of 1965, 54 years ago, and what it's like today. And there's, I think there's five or six pictures here, and I tried to emulate almost exactly where the photographer was standing in 1965. I tried to stand in that same place yet this past weekend and take the exact same picture. So, let's go to the first one. Okay, this is at the bottom of the Houston Street Hill, and you can see that what is now our City Hall building is off there in the distance. And this is part of what they were calling the reclaiming of the second channel of the river, and they began to fill it in. And it was there kind of in a uncontrollable mess, is what it was. But it was right when Art Swanson was mayor, and Alderman Brown's father was a senior member on the City Council, and they had a very aggressive idea for really transforming downtown Batavia. And to their credit, it was transformed, as you will see, because those two gentlemen get the credit for about, a lot about what you're supposed to see. So, I went to this exact same location where this picture was taken on Sunday and took the next picture. And this is, this is how different things look. And you can see, you know, we've incorporated the bike trail, so it's off the road. We've got, you know, the Depot Museum, assumed to be expanded, hopefully. We've got the City Hall building. We got the River Walk. We got all the area downtown, and we've got some very nice office space. And it's, you know, I think something that, when you show these to people, how you've transformed something, it really does make a case for it. Next, let's go to the next one. Okay, this is over on North Water Street. And again, I stood in the exact same location that this guy took this picture in November 1965. And I would note that almost everything you see in this picture is now gone. There's a couple of things that are somewhat transformed, but let's go to the next picture. This is what this looks like today. So, again, you see how something really can be transformed. But I think we've still got some work to do on Water Street. Obviously, because of the bike trails that came, come through, we do have a lot of bike activity here, and it's become a very viable, I couldn't believe as I was trying to take these pictures, how much time I had to wait for all the traffic that was driving by on Sunday, with everybody coming by and trying to go someplace. There was a lot of traffic down there. Next picture. Okay, this is on the bottom of the Houston Street Hill, looking up the hill. And to the, let's see, be to the left-hand side of the picture as we're looking at it, that's the Feast Oil Refinery that they had there with the above-ground storage tanks for gasoline. And then right across the street is a building that John Pitts later tore down, and he had his well-drilling business in there for a few years. And you can see Houston Street was basically one lane wide. And at the very bottom of the picture, you can just see that there's railroad tracks, and this is the old Northwestern Railroad line, which was one of the lines that was bought by the city in cooperation with the Kane County Board in 1981, shortly after I became the mayor. And that's when all hell broke loose, because we were going to put the bike trail through the west side and the east side of Batavia, and there was all these people who wanted to protest how terrible it was to have these bike trails there. And I got all kinds of political battle scars on me from all the meetings I went to, and I was going to put burglars and drug dealers and rapists and everything in people's backyard, and they were going to gradually depreciate the value of their property, all of which, none of that happened. But now we have probably 5,000 bicycle riders on a good summer weekend come through Batavia on these bike trails. Now, one thing I will say about the bike trails was, right after we got through doing this, this really got to be quite a piece of conversation in, in the state. And I got asked to come to the Illinois Parks Convention down in Springfield, and was joined by the mayor of Rockford, whose name was Mayor McNamara. There's another mayor of McNamara in Rockford today. It's the son of the guy that I was, and Rockford had done the same thing with bike trails along the Rock River that we had done on the Fox River. And so, the crowd asked us in those days, "What's the secret of your success?" And I said, "Well, one of the secrets was, is that we built these bike trails where there weren't any roads. We basically were on railroad right-ofways, and so we didn't have a lot of cross-traffic." And so, again, let's go to the next slide. And you can see how drastically, dramatically that has changed from what that was. And, you know, you got a restaurant, you got an office building. We still have old Avenue Motors building up the top of the hill, although Laura and I have met with folks who tell us they're about to do some massive restoration in that building and do some neat stuff in it. So, we're, got our fingers crossed that that's going to happen. And you can see the wide sidewalks and everything else we got there. So, it's a, it's a nicely put-together street. Next slide. Why don't I get something here? Okay.
Can you describe it?
What?
We can use our imagination.
Can you give me?
The other one?
Yeah. Okay, this is, now, we should have another slide out here that showed this...
The before?
Before. I don't know where that, what happened to that. See, the technology, we can say all we want about it, but it does not always perform. And that's why I remain somewhat skeptical. Always.
Are they out of, are they out of order?
Passing bad.
I don't know. We're ordered this afternoon. We put them together, but somehow or another, the technology went astray on us here. Anyway, this is what it looks like today. If nothing else, maybe I'll be able to show you what the other, this is a great picture of this from up the top of the hill, what this looked like in 65. It was a one-lane alley going down there, but anyway. Let's go to the, is there a next one? Okay, this is out in front of City Hall, and this is what this looked like, and you can see the buildings that were there. And the most interesting thing was this huge High Line conductor of the electric utility. And this was a very interesting edifice. We finally, the city electricians went to work after I got elected mayor, and we rerouted all this wire. And then we had a big ceremony one day when they cut this thing down. And then we had a big row at the City Council, because one of the aldermen thought that somebody was able to sell the scrap and be able to make money on it. And we were able to show them that the city got the money for the scrap, but that's just one of the stories I have of this. But you can see how unattractive this area looked. So, hopefully, we can go to the next slide, and this is what that same area looks like today. So, I think all of you can sit here, and you can see how much progress has been made in Batavia from what it did look like to what it has become. And, you know, we can pat ourselves on the back, I think, with a great degree of appreciation. I've had the opportunity the last few years to speak to all the 50th and 60th class reunions for Batavia High School. And inevitably, when everybody comes back, they were back in this era before, when all those original pictures were taken. Again, everybody is totally amazed or blown away by how this has all changed for the better in downtown Batavia. So, you know, when people say, "Well, you're doing too much," or whatever, I think this really speaks to what a town and the City Council can do if they really focus on trying to keep their eye on the prize and do some stuff.
When I look at those pictures from, from 65, and you look at what it looked like, even up to like 85, it didn't change a whole lot. It got filled in, and there was a street there, but the buildings were all just falling apart downtown, at the north end.
Right. All right, let's go to the next thing. Okay, this is my next adventure. This is on Saturday, and I'm, this is taken at the intersection of South Prairie and Laurel Street. And I, pulling up to this intersection, I was on Laurel, and I was going to make a right-hand turn, and there was another car coming east on Laurel, and they were at the, going to make a left-hand, or a right-hand turn and go south on Prairie. And so, we both looked at each other. We had our turn signals on, and so, I started making my turn. And all of a sudden, here comes this gentleman riding a bicycle southbound on Prairie Street. And I don't know how fast he was going, but he didn't stop for nothing. And he went right into the path of this car that was trying, and the lady in the car slammed on her brakes. She had three little kids in the car, and the poor little kids got jerked around a little bit, and this guy just kept right on going. And I've seen this before, and I've shared this with the Bike Commission. I'm not overly impressed at all with the design of South Prairie Street with these two readily available bike lanes. I think we're just going to greatly enhance this, we're going to get somebody seriously hurt or killed down there, the way people drive down that street on bicycles. So, I'm in the process. I've talked to IDOT. I've been to Schaumburg. I've talked to everybody. I'm going to send you all some information, because there is different ways that that street can be designed, and we can have bicycles on it. But we don't, I don't think we want to make, my personal opinion is, I think you're making a big mistake if you let that thing become just an open bike lane on both north and southbound of that street. And I've got, I'm going to send you some memos that I've got of other bicycle parking, trash, sleep, street designs, and it's going to be your decision. I'm just not even voting on this, but I'm telling you, I don't think that's a good idea to put that improvement in the way it is. The Bicycle Commission knows I'm upset about it. They're great people. I have great admiration for them. But we got a whole bunch of other places in town. We already got bicycle trails. We got one going down Millview Drive. We got one over on Western Avenue. And on all those, we're, we're all sharing the road. We're parking, we're driving, we're bicycles. We're all doing all of our things. And I, I just think that making something an exclusive bike trail is, I just think we're heading ourselves into some serious trouble in the future. So, I just wanted to make a statement about that. Alderman Atech?
I have two questions. I'm wondering if it would be possible to redirect the bikes to a Dant Road, because there, there is a nice bike trail or designated bike path on the west side. So, but that would probably mean going up on Wilson somehow. The other thing is, so, is it, would it be possible to put parking on one side, do you think, on Prairie Street?
Well, I think that would certainly help slow the traffic down. I mean, and the bicycles, too. That would be my opinion of what we should. I think there's one more slide here.
Okay.
This is at the south end of Prairie Street at Pine Street. And this is, as some of you, I know, know, because you've gotten the same calls I have, there's, there's a bunch of folks at the end of South Prairie Street that are very dismayed about all the parking coming off. And most of them are elderly people. They don't think that there's going to be any place to park. The one tells me that what really frosts them is, is that there's four months of the year, November, December, January, and February, when nobody's probably riding a bicycle down there, and it's during the holiday season. But now you want to restrict their ability to park people in front of their house for holiday parties, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'll let them talk to you. But, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this thing, and I just don't think you should move too quickly on this till you really get a better view of what's going on. So, I've got some stuff. I'm going to be putting together a memo. I'm going to be sending it to you, and you can do with it what you want, but you know where I stand on this thing. So, I, I just think that there are some issues with this thing that, and for whatever reason, I've, I've seen it rather recently on Prairie Street on other occasions, when people get on those bicycles, and they just think that's a non-stop stretch, where you can just go flying down there, and you don't have to stop for nothing. And I'm thinking that's going to be a memorable moment of negativity someday, when somebody goes flying through there and gets involved with a car accident. So, that's all I have. Alderman Brown, you want to make a motion for adjournment?
I will adjourn the City Council.
Second meeting.
Take a voice vote?
Colin Ficker?
Hi.